Good afternoon, everyone. Or is it evening? Good evening, everyone. It's still light outdoors, so I can't quite get used to it. So, welcome to our City Council meeting tonight, and we are going to call it to order and have a roll call by our City Clerk, Marcy Killian.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
The next thing on our agenda is our Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation, and we will welcome Sherri Rowe, President of the Vista Republican Women Federated.
Ladies and gentlemen, will you please stand and say a pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Eternal Father, so often we find ourselves in desperate need for wisdom beyond our understanding. I offer thanks to you because you are the stability of our times, a wealth of salvation, wisdom, and knowledge, and I thank you because you have promised to give wisdom to anyone who would ever ask for it, withholding that particular gift from no one. Tonight I ask for your wisdom to be evident in this place for all who would receive it. I ask in faith, for I know it is impossible to please you without faith. I know who you are, Father, and so I know that you do reward those who diligently seek you. Tonight I ask for wisdom beyond understanding, for ears to hear with three-dimensional hearing, being quick to hear, slow to speak, and slow to anger, for integrity to say what we mean and do what we say, for courage to always do what is good, right, and morally sound, for boldness to stand for principles of this republic and its constitutional rights, for unity born out of a respectful trust of each person here who truly seeks the common good of the community. And last of all, I thank you for the gifts represented here and for people who have unselfishly stepped forward to serve others. Finally, as an ordained minister, I declare a blessing over this meeting tonight for peaceable productivity and for protection, in the name of Almighty God. Amen.
Amen.
In closing, I do want to personally thank all of the board members here tonight who unselfishly give of their talents and time. You are a blessing to Vista, and as a Vista resident for almost 20 years, I'm delighted to see new businesses filling up on Main Street, and I thank you for the hard work you've done to create a non-hostile work atmosphere. I think that'll bring other people to Vista. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of covering simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And the next thing is our approval of our agenda by our City Manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Because of the number of speakers anticipated for the public hearing tonight, we'll reverse the order of the agenda and hear the public hearing items first, and then we'll follow that with the discussion item on the budget.
Okay. There were no closed session items scheduled for this meeting, so with that, we will go on to our presentations, which are next on our agenda, and the first presentation is a proclamation for the North County Lifeline declaring the month of April 2013 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Vista. So, is Kelly Matthews here? We do Fair Housing Month. So, we're gonna do a little proclamation here. It says, "Whereas the federal and state housing laws prohibit discrimination based on race, color, religion, national origin, age, sex, sexual preference, family status, disability, or source of income; and whereas the city of Vista receives federal Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds, as an entitlement community and is required to engage in a fair housing planning, the city of Vista affirmatively furthers fair housing by providing fair housing services and information to residents as part of the fair housing program adopted by the City Council. The federal government has designated the month of April as Fair Housing Month during which interested parties from the public and private sectors will participate in a nationwide effort to provide education about fair housing laws and to promote fair housing practices. So, now therefore, the mayor and the members of our City Council do hereby proclaim the month of April 2013 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Vista." So, congratulations, and do you have anything you would like to say?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Ritter, and esteemed council members. North County Lifeline is proud to represent the city of Vista's fair housing program. April 11th, 2013 is the 45th anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act. Housing discrimination comes in many forms, and any one of us can be affected by it. Dealing with that discrimination is not an option, it's the law. As we move on through Fair Housing Month, it's important to remember that this is a job that requires year-round attention, not just during a special month, Fair Housing Month. Working together with city staff Kathy Valdez and others, we are providing the residents of Vista with an opportunity to understand and exercise their rights to equal and fair housing opportunity and services in the city of Vista. Once again, thank you for proclaiming April Fair Housing Month.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that is our only presentation tonight. So, with that, we will move on to our consent calendar, and the consent calendar are all items that are enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request-to-speak card to our secretary, or our clerk, actually. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So, let's see, do I have anything here? So, there's nothing by the public is removed. Anything up by Councilmember Rigby?
Madam Mayor, I would like the record to reflect this evening that because of a conflict or a remote interest in item C6, I will recuse myself from the vote on C6.
Okay. Councilmember Aguilera?
I'd like to pull C1 and C4.
Okay. Let's see, four, okay. Then I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion for...
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Rigby abstaining from C6. Okay, then the first thing, we'll do C1. Do you need a report, or a questions?
No, actually, I just need a quick clarification, so...
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, in the very first page, we have a summary there, and on there, it talks about number 12, Edco Waste and Recycling, and I noticed that there, under the description of payment, it says "street sweeping," and I was under the impression that our city did that. Did we contract that out now, or how does that handle?
Councilman, we contract out with Edco for street sweeping.
We do?
Yes.
Okay.
We've done that for about a little over two years now.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Do you want to do a motion for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the check register as provided.
Okay, I'll second that. So, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next item pulled was C4, fiscal year 2013-14 sewer capacity fee charges. And do you want to report on that, or do you have a question?
Really, just a clarification. I think we all received a letter from a Jane's Medair questioning, or protesting the rising of, the rate increase, sorry. But as I read through it, I just, I noticed that it's really just a sewer connection fee. It's really more for developers and new projects. Just wanted to make a clarification that this is not a rate increase to existing homes and existing customers?
Yes, yes, Councilmember. My name is Dale Nielsen. I'm the Finance Manager and City Treasurer for the city of Vista. The item C4 tonight addresses sewer connection fees, or commonly known as sewer capacity fees, and those are fees that are paid by developers or businesses when they are initially hooking up to the sewer system. In essence, they're buying a right to use the sewer system, almost like a licensing right. That in itself is completely separate from the annual sewer service charges that are levied each year on customers of both the city and the Buena Sanitation District for the annual use of the sewer service for any given particular year. This year, there is no increase in the sewer capacity fees as indicated in item C4 because it is tied to a price indexing, and that price index did not go up for the year, and the sewer service charges is a, you know, a separate issue, separate item, and once again, not being on the agenda tonight, but there is no scheduled rate increases for either Buena or the city for the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, well, that's good to hear. So, with that, I will make a motion to approve C4.
A second.
You have a motion and a second? Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our calendar, we are going to go to our first public hearing. We've put the discussion item toward the end, so we're gonna do Public Hearing 1, which is the Central Vista Business Improvement District. So, we'll open the public hearing and do a report. Okay, Kevin Ham's gonna do a little update for us.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Kevin Ham. I'm Director of Economic Development for the city, and with me is Rachel Beld. She's a management analyst in our office, and she'll be giving the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. On February 26th, 2013, the City Council approved the Central Vista Business Improvement District, CVBID, Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2013-14, and adopted a resolution declaring the city's intent to levy assessments for the CVBID. By law, this public hearing has been properly noticed and scheduled for the consideration of the proposed assessments, which represent no fee increases or boundary changes for the upcoming fiscal year. At this public hearing, the City Council will consider all protests against the assessments. If protests from business owners within the district who pay more than 50% of the proposed assessments are received, then no further proceeding for the levy of the assessments will be taken for one year. If no majority protest exists, the levy of the proposed assessment may be approved through the adoption of Resolution of Confirmation, Exhibit 1. The CVBID is a funding mechanism which nets approximately $55,000 to $60,000 per year. The CVBID Advisory Board oversees these funds, and the city has historically contracted with the Vista Village Business Association to implement and manage the programs funded by these assessments. If the City Council approves the resolution, staff will develop an agreement for the use of the revenues and any matching funds for council approval in June. This concludes our report. City staff, the CVBID Advisory Board Chair, Maureen Barrick, as well as the VVBA Executive Director, Brigitte Taylor, are available should you have any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the council? I have one speaker, actually, two speakers. Maureen will speak if there's any questions, but I have one speaker. Do you want to have a speaker first? Chuck Rabo?
I'm on the Economic Restructuring Committee of the many committees that I'm on of the VVBA, and please keep in mind, we have a new director there, and let's keep things going as they are today, and I'd like to see a written report on the survey that we did downtown, of which I was part of. You've got the email, right? Good, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the council? My only question is, at some point, I would like to see, I thought they did a work, like a work program, or a work, you know, so we had a work program to see, so that the businesses could see where their money was being spent on what programs, and so they did kind of a projection for the year. At least, I remember that, but I don't, I asked Patrick, our City Manager, and he said they didn't do it last year, but I just remember in the past, they've always done a work program, and I think that would be a thing that I would like to see, and maybe it would come back when they come back. They're coming back to us again in June?
What we'll do is, we'll bring back in June, the agreement with the VVBA to implement the CVBID, and at that time, they usually go over their successes for the year, as well as their program of work for the upcoming year.
Oh, okay, perfect. Okay, any other questions from anybody? I would entertain a motion from somebody.
I'll move that we accept staff's recommendation for this item, Central Vista Business Improvement District.
And close the public hearing?
And close the pub, I move that we close the public hearing and adopt this.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. The next public hearing, we have three tonight, and our next public hearing is the 2013-14 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and Revised 2012-13 Annual Action Plan. So, John, oh, Kathy Valdez is going to give us a report. We'll open the public hearing first.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council.
I don't think you're on. No, you're really not on. It is a good evening.
It is good now. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The focus of today's item is to conduct a public hearing regarding revisions to the city's 2012-2013 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, Proposed Annual Action Plan for 2013-14, and to open a 30-day comment period to allow for further community The city's 2012 annual plan is being revised to allocate unexpended funds from previous program years and to reallocate funds from the city's current grant allocation that cannot be expended as originally planned. The city has been a CDBG entitlement jurisdiction since 1991. Over the years, there have been occasions when the city has not spent its full allocation. This may be due to a project costing less than anticipated, savings in administrative costs, or the inability to start a project for which funds have been budgeted. These unexpended funds are available to the city for CDBG eligible activities, but may not be used to increase the amount of funding for public service projects or administration above the annual cap of 15% and 20%, respectively. Staff recommends allocating $650,000 in unencumbered funds from previous grant years to make a prepayment on the city's Section 108 loan. The annual payments increase by about $25,000 each year, with a scheduled final payment of $504,425 in 2018. With the uncertainty of funding levels for entitlement programs such as CDBG, it is prudent for the city to make additional payments on the loan, which are done without penalty. If CDBG funds continue to dwindle or are eliminated, the city will be responsible for paying the remainder of the loan. Staff also recommends reallocating $5,000 in unspent funds from the 2012 allocation for the Section 108 loan repayment. These funds were originally recommended for a public service project, however, the agency experienced organizational and financial challenges that made them ineligible to receive the subcontract. The third change is the number of individuals assisted through the Vista Mobile Home Assistance Program. We're reducing it from 40 to 25 to reflect the current number of participants. The city is expected to receive $201,346 in home funding and $832,228 in CDBG funding for fiscal year 2013-14. The county of San Diego, which manages the home consortium, recommended that staff use level funding for home planning purposes. Staff used an 8.4% reduction in funding, the amount imposed by the sequester, for CDBG planning purposes. A total of $41,000 in CDBG funds from previous program years will be reallocated to the fiscal year 2013-14 funding cycle, bringing the total available funds to $1,074,574. Home funds for this fiscal year will be allocated to the Vista Mobile Home Assistance Program and the Housing Rehabilitation Program. A small amount of funds are also designated for administration of the program. CDBG funds will be utilized to fund debt service obligations, administration services for the CDBG home and Calhome-funded programs, as well as for our fair housing program, housing rehabilitation program, capital projects, and public or social service projects. The annual debt service payment for fiscal year 2013-14 is $383,179. In 1999, the city utilized a HUD Section 108 loan to assist in financing the highly successful Transit Center and Vista Village projects. The loan is to be repaid from future CDBG allocations. With the recommended prepayment, the loan will be fully repaid in 2017. Under program guidelines, a maximum of 20% of the city's annual allocation may be used for CDBG administration. Any savings in administration can be used to supplement capital or housing projects that cannot be used for public services due to the cap on these activities. Staff is recommending utilizing the full 20% available to cover staff time to administer the CDBG housing program, as well as our fair housing services. Staff recommends allocating $90,000 for the Housing Rehabilitation Program. These funds will leverage home and Calhome dollars, enabling 10 individuals to receive loans to make health and safety improvements to their home. Staff recommends using capital funds for facility and capital improvement projects. Funds will be used to improve access to or rehabilitate facilities used by low and moderate income individuals. As approved by City Council in setting funding priorities and noted in the RFP package, the city's Out and About program and Operation Hope were identified to receive funding through a non-competitive process. A total of 16 funding requests for public service projects were received under the city's competitive Request for Proposals process. All applications met the CDBG eligibility criteria based upon the Request for Proposal Guidelines, as well as applicable federal and local requirements. Based on the amount of funding available, the CDBG Citizens Advisory Committee recommends funding the seven highest-scoring applications at 70% to 80% of their funding request. Funding in the amount of $12,000 for the city's Out and About Senior Transportation Program and $20,000 for Operation Hope is recommended for the respective programs. Funds allocated for Operation Hope represent the city's fair share contribution to the Alliance for Regional Solutions. The CDBG Citizens Advisory Committee recommends funding seven highest-scoring applications, which are Interfaith Community Services, North County Lifeline, North County Solutions for Change, Palomar Family Counseling, Terry, Inc., The Angels Depot, and Vista Community The proposed public service programs will provide a spectrum of care under the following categories. Approximately 40% of funds will go to homeless prevention and intervention services, including self-sufficiency services to help prevent homelessness, support services at a transitional housing site, and emergency winter shelter. 31% of the funds will go towards health services, including the Wellness Clinic, mental health services for youth and families, and dental care for developmentally disabled individuals. And 29% will go to senior services, including transportation, emergency food boxes, and support services to assess seniors and maintain their independence. This concludes staff's presentation. Mr. Meyer and I are available to answer questions.
We have 10 public speakers, and would you like to hear those first?
Sure.
Okay. We'll start with Adam McWay.
My name is Adam McWay, and I am here on behalf of The Angels Depot. Our founder and executive director, Susan Hall, regrettably was unable to attend tonight's meeting. I am here to urge City Council to accept and adopt the recommendation being made tonight that The Angels Depot receive CDBG public service program funding from the city of Vista for the upcoming fiscal year. CDBG funding will help ensure that the depot is able to continue to serve seniors living in poverty in the city of Vista. Each month, The Angels Depot provides emergency food boxes that contain enough food to prepare 21 meals, seven breakfasts, seven lunches, seven dinners, and snacks to more than 50 seniors living in poverty in the city of Vista. The emergency meal box provides food security for our most vulnerable citizens. All the seniors served are pre-qualified as extremely low-income as defined in CDBG guidelines. The Angels Depot Senior Food for a Week 21 Meal Emergency Box Program impacts these seniors' lives by providing them on a monthly basis with nutritious emergency food, reducing food insecurity and improving the quality of their lives, allowing them to remain independent and in their home. The Angels Depot is proud to be based in Vista and provide positive publicity countywide as we currently have 20 partnering distribution sites throughout San Diego County, and we serve more than 900 seniors every month out of our warehouse and offices here in Vista. Again, thank you for your time, and I urge you once again to accept and adopt the recommendation to fund The Angels Depot's Senior Food for a Week 21 Meal Emergency Box Program in the city of Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ray Turan, followed by Nadine Kaina. Did I say that right?
I'm kinda nice. Kinda.
Kinda, okay, got it, sorry.
Honorable Mayor Ritter, members of the council, executive staff, I represent, my name is Ray Turan. I represent Casa de Amparo, and we are here to lend our support to the 2013 and 2014 action plan, as well as the revisions to the 2012 and 13 action plan. We'd like to thank you for your previous assistance to the Casa de Amparo. We did apply, and we do understand and accept the recommendations from the committee, and thank them for their effort for doing that. We do plan to do a better job next year and apply in the next round. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Nadine, followed by Don Stumpf.
Mayor and City Council.
You never fail to surprise us with this.
I know, I have my bag of tricks, and it doesn't get any easier. I think I've been coming for about 10 years, so I gotta get all my props out in order to get to my special hat. I wanted to tell you that last fall, I went with the Senior Citizen Culture Caravan to a trip in the fall and went to the Magic Castle in Los Angeles, and so I knew that this magic wand was gonna help me do what I'm gonna tell you in a minute, but I need my hat to perform my trick. So now, I'm a magician, and to tell you how Project Care, Community Action to Reach the Elderly, can help seniors in their homes, and we are under Interfaith Community Services. One of the things that I pull out of my hat is the vial of life, and we have given out, let's see, 2,680 of these in the 10 years since I've been doing this, and then, we do a daily phone call, which has 57 seniors in the program now, and that's part of San Marcos, because I'm doing two offices now, and it really helps to have a telephone. But we did save a life this fall, and the first time in 10 years that we saved a life with this telephone program. And because I only have three minutes, I need to tell you about the grab bars that we've installed, and we do other minor home repairs, and this, we did 34 so far this year. It doesn't sound like very many, but it's really because we have volunteer handyman, and they can only do so much, too. So, we're trying to do everything we can to help seniors, to keep them safe in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Don Stumpf, followed by Terry Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and executive staff.
You don't have a hat?
I don't have a hat. It's a great hat, though. I want to say thank you. Thank you for your long-term partnership with North County Lifeline, helping us to help those most in need in Vista. Last year, North County Lifeline served over 28,000 people in North Last year, North County Lifeline served over 28,000 people in North County. 4,000 youth at risk were involved in the criminal justice system, diverting them out of that. More than 5,000 kids struggling with mental health disorders and severe emotional disturbances, and more than 1,000 families impacted by child abuse and other family violence. And then, in this last year, we've actually taken on some emerging needs in the community. We partnered with the Sheriff's Department and created Victim Services for Victims of Human Trafficking. Sorry. We've also partnered with Vista Unified School District and have created specialized mental health services for kids on the spectrum of autism and Asperger's. And then finally, we are kicking off on Monday our Housing Services for Kids Aging out of the foster care system. So because of the support we get from the city of Vista, we're able to really build capacity all over the community. So I'm here to thank you for helping us run our Financial Opportunities Center. Through your support, we're able to leverage other dollars from workforce partnership, from local initiative support corporation, to provide employment, financial education, and free tax services. So I encourage your support tonight. Thank you.
And we thank you. Terry Williams, followed by Debbie King.
Good evening. Terry Williams, representing Terry Incorporated. Terry serves children and adults with autism and other developmental disabilities across the lifespan. Our program serves, we have seven residences here in the city of Vista, of 12 residences, serving 42 significantly disabled adults. The program this year will provide annual oral health care and nurse case management to 42 individuals residing in Vista. Nurse case management will provide ongoing education and monitoring of daily oral hygiene, liaising with the dentist's office to arrange appointments, attend appointments, and monitor aftercare. Of the 42 individuals, 28 people will be supported by CDBG funds at an average cost per beneficiary of $357. 100% of these individuals are Vista residents, 100% possess incomes at or below the federal poverty level. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Debbie King, followed by Fernando.
Mayor Ritter and members of the council, good evening. And on behalf of the many families whose lives are about to change for the better, thank you. I'm Debbie King. I'm the Director of Strategic Development at Solutions for Change, and our founders, Chris and Tammy Magason, were unavailable to be here this evening, but asked me to convey to you their gratitude for once again supporting our efforts to end family homelessness. In June, Solutions for Change will open its 47th unit, Vista Terrace Affordable Housing Development, located off Postal Way here in Vista. This is a milestone event for Solutions for Change, for our residents, and for our community. The CDBG grant that is recommended in funding Solutions for Change will help provide supportive services for our families that are entering in the second phase of Solutions for Change University. And in the second 500 days, they'll be receiving additional counseling, coaching, and mental health support to further strengthen their success at solving their homelessness. Now Vista Terrace is not just affordable housing. The housing is an integral, essential component in a carefully structured, time-tested program that has demonstrated a high rate of successfully and permanently solving homelessness for our families. And since launching the Supportive Housing Initiative, Solutions for Change and our community enjoys a 93% success rate. Those families remain housed and stable and successful a year out and beyond. This success is not just about the adults in these families, but it's also the children who have, who will have the housing stability they need to attend and succeed in their educational endeavors. And it is the success certainly of the children that is the real answer to breaking the cycle of family homelessness, which benefits our individuals, all individuals in our community, and the community as a whole. So it is in helping these children and breaking that cycle of despair and improving the community with, which is what the Community Development Grant for two Solutions for Change will ultimately accomplish. So we're here tonight. I'm here tonight on behalf of our families and for all of us at Solutions for Change to thank you for being an important part of making this happen for our community.
Thanks, Debbie. Fernando, followed by Chuck Rabel. I didn't do your last name, Fernando. Say it.
Sanudo.
Sanudo?
You were close last time.
Sanudo, yeah.
So, good evening, mayor and members of City Council. My name is Fernando Sanudo, and I'm the new CEO, the male version of Barbara Benino, at Vista Community Clinic. I'm here to thank you for your continued support of our Wellness Center. Vista Community Clinic serves over 57,000 patients, which generate about 240 patient visits per year. Your funds will allow us to immunize over 3,000 low-income and/or uninsured and at-risk patients, like our diabetics, of which 65% are uninsured. The Wellness Center, if you haven't visited the clinic, has a separate entrance that allows patients to get in and out quickly without having to be exposed to some of our sick patients. This becomes very important right now. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but Tri-City Medical Center will be closing their pediatric ward, which means that when we need to hospitalize children, we'll be sending them to Palomar Hospital. So for our moms, many of which don't have cars and take the bus here, it's gonna be a great challenge. So now, more than ever, we need to make sure that we're immunizing our children to keep them healthy and keep them out of the hospital. Another trivia is that Vista Community Clinic, with the number of years that we've been here and the demand that we have for the services that we provide, we're currently providing healthcare services for one of every four resident in the city of Vista. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Rabel, followed by Lorraine Rosenfeld.
Good evening again. It's, seems like every year I'd speak on this subject. Unfortunately, fortunately, many of us went to the Boys and Girls Club to celebrate their 50th anniversary today. Unfortunately, they didn't make the cut on the money. Do in part, do wholly, by a mistake 10 years ago or so, when the previous council took the community block grant money and leveraged it on a note, and when you add in the 20% overhead for the city staff, we're talking about 50% of the community block grant money this year is gone before the community sees anything. On the other side of things, I'm on the Oversight Board for the redevelopment, the successor agency to redevelopment, and we've got city commissions for almost everything, but we don't have a city housing commission which includes the citizens. And I strongly recommend that you consider that. We've got a traffic commission, a planning commission, a commission on the community block grant stuff, parks and rec. We got all kinds of commission that involve the voters, but the housing commission doesn't. Just give it some thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorraine Rosenfeld, followed by Belinda Brady.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Lorraine Rosenfeld. I'm here representing Fraternity House Incorporated, which has one of our houses in the city of Vista. We are the resident, the only two residential care facilities for persons with AIDS in the county. We appreciate the opportunity to present a proposal to you, and I just wanted to point out that it appeared that anyone that asked for less than $12,000 did not get a cent. And I just thought that was a bit of a letdown, because we were aware of the financial impact that the sequestration and the various funds that were denied to the city, and therefore we have been cutting back on what we asked for to be more conservative and try to get whatever we can and still be fair to the other wonderful organizations that also desperately need the money. Another issue is, I wanted to explain to you, when you review the 116-page Annual Action Plan, you will see that Fraternity House actually fits into more than one slot in the CDBG arena. On page 48, we have a special needs population that you have served greatly in the past, and we serve daily. Furthermore, on page 69 of the, of that same document, it specifically relates to persons with AIDS. What we are doing is not only helping prevent homelessness, but we are also providing medical care services that are greatly needed. So if you decide not to amend your budget this year, we strongly request that you remember us next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Brady, followed by Cliff Kaiser.
Hello. Thank you for your time. My name is Melinda Brady. I have been a volunteer for Meals on Wheels for about the last four years now. It's something that I have gotten great satisfaction out of. I don't envy any of you at all tonight by the decisions that you have to make with the money situations. I look at all of these, the people that are applying for money, and they're such great causes, and there's such limited funds on doing it. But I would like to thank you for all of your past support. It has meant a lot to us. And Mayor Judy Ritter, thank you so much for participating on our Mayor's Day, where you actually went out and delivered to our clients. They were absolutely overjoyed to see you.
I enjoy it, too.
Yeah, it's a great thing. Meals on Wheels is not federally funded. Our clients pay for a good portion of their meals, but we keep the cost down as low as we can to them, and it costs us about twice what we charge them to deliver the meals. We rely on fundraisers, and we rely on community support to be able to keep us out there doing what we do each day. Our average senior that we deliver to is 82 years of age. 49% of them are over the age of 85. They have been greatly impacted by the economic situation that we've all been in the last few years. And it's estimated that 84% of them are considered low-income by HUD standards. These are our mothers, our fathers, our aunts, our uncles. These are the people that were out there building this country, fighting the wars, and we want to be there for them now that they are in a great time of need. We rely very heavily on our volunteers that are out there giving of their time and their gas to deliver these meals. They drive here in the county for us, about 725,000 miles a year to get these meals out there. They do wellness checks to make sure that our seniors are fine and functioning. Our seniors greatly look forward to the food, but they actually very much look forward to the human contact that's there. We ask you just to keep us in mind and in your decision-making, and do anything that you can to assist us. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Cliff Kaiser, followed by Jean Cole.
Mayor, council, just a couple of quick questions that I couldn't detect from the agenda report is, the loan in 1999 for $5.6 million was a loan from the block grant funds, and it appears that we're trying to pay it back with the same funds. And the loan was taken for projects that were in the Transit Center and in Vista Village. So I just don't understand the connection that we can loan money or borrow money from that fund and then pay it back with the same funds for stuff that doesn't seem to be part of the low-income project. The other question is, in the fiscal impact report, it doesn't say that there's general funds. I just want to confirm that there is no city funds, city Vista taxpayer funds that are part of this project. It's all federal government funds that are managed by you as the council.
Do I respond to that one?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
The funds are federal government funds. They're not City of Vista funds, and the money that was used to develop or help develop the Transit Center was the loan from Section 108, and we're paying it back with CDBG funds, and we're making payments on that. As stated in the staff report, it'll be paid back in 2017.
Mayor and council, my name is Jean Cole. I'm with Operation Hope, and I really hadn't planned to say anything today, except I think it's really important to, for one, for us to thank you for the support that you've given Operation Hope, but even more so for you to see and to know how this community works together, and I think a lot of it has to do with the ongoing continued support of the council and the staff of the city of Vista. We work very closely with Solutions for Change, with Lifeline, with the Community Clinic. All of us are working together to help solve the problems of folks in Vista who are a little less fortunate than most of us. And I think that that collaboration shows strength in our city and the support that you all have given to us, and so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. That is our last speaker, so do I have any comments from the council? Deputy Mayor Coles.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the committee that has to review all these applications and make some really tough decisions, because I know, after speaking to some of them, that it's really, there's just not enough to go around. And it really is with a heavy heart that we've had to cut back so much, regardless of this loan factor, just the funding that we've gotten from the federal government has been so drastically reduced. And thank you, those of you who are being recommended to receive funds, for your generous thanks to us for not enough money, but a good report on what you've been doing with it. We always like to hear that the progress and the efforts that you make on behalf of this small amount that we contribute to you is appreciated. So I, that's my comment. Thank you.
Just before I go, the committee, can I have the people around the committee stand up? I just wanted to thank them. Lenore? I just want to thank you so much for what you do. Our next speaker, Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, mayor. I really just wanted to reiterate what Deputy Mayor Coles said and thank the committee. It's a tough job. You do that work for us. We kind of lay out the guidelines for you, and I think you did a great job in meeting our guidelines. You know, funds are tight, and the rules have definitely changed. So unfortunately, you know, I'd like to see more money go to Boys and Girls Club and, you know, Fraternity House, Meals on Wheels. Those are all great projects, and if we could help them and we had the funds, we would certainly consider them. But I just urge those organizations that did not receive funds to continue to apply and make your case, and good luck next year. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you. Again, I just want to reiterate what's already been said. First of all, thank you to the committee who did go through all of the applications, and it was a very tough decision to make with the loss of funds that we have. We don't have as much that we can give out. All of the organizations that applied for the funding are very good organizations. They do amazing things for our community, but unfortunately, we just had to pare it down this year. So the organizations that will be receiving funds, we really appreciate everything that you're going to do with the monies, and we look forward to hearing back next year in the programs that you've done. the programs that you've done. And the programs, again, like Boys and Girls Club, it was mentioned, we were there today to celebrate their 50th birthday for the Boys and Girls Club, had a great program with the kids there, and I really look forward to what they continue to do, as well as these other organizations. And don't lose hope. Please come back next year. And I think it was Ms. Brady recognizing the tough decision that the committee had to make, and I thank you for your grace, as I'm sure the committee does as well. So those are my comments. Thank you, and we'll see all of those other organizations back again next year.
Thank you. Okay, well, if I have no more comments, then I would entertain a motion. Close the public hearing first, and then...
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the recommendation. I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our agenda, we have one more public hearing, and that's the 2012 Regional Transportation Improvement Plan Amendment. We call it the RTIP. So John Conley will be taking that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is, the RTIP is the CIP budget essentially for Sandag, which is the Regional Transportation Agency that provides transnet funding to the city for regional projects that are in our CIP. They have to program that budget every year by plugging money in, basically, that the city uses for their CIP projects. And so when we make changes to our CIP, we go back and adopt a new RTIP, and they adjust it to make sure that they have the funding available to provide for the city. In the process of going through this year's CIP, we have a few of the accounts that we have to reconcile, and so we're going back to, Sandag requires us to hold a public hearing to make sure that we give the public an opportunity to comment on that. And so we're doing that this evening to make the adjustments to the projects that are recommended by Sandag staff. And that completes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Do I have any questions from the council at all? I don't have any speakers either, so then I would entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the recommendation. I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously also. Now, we're going to go back to our discussion item, the fiscal year 2013-14 budget overview, and I think our city manager is going to take that. Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. The purpose of the budget overview this evening is to review the larger components of the budget on a more macro level in an effort to receive direction in preparation of the May 14 draft budget, which will come before you. Before I get started, I just want to thank all the individual department employees that have been involved in the process. They're very committed. We've made a lot of changes over the years and necessary changes that will reduce our deficit. I would also specifically like to thank Laura Johnson, who's here at the table in purple, and Jeanette Ferris for their many, many, many hours of work on this budget, both at work hours and after work. They put a lot of heart and soul into it, and so thank you to Laura and Jeanette. And I'd also like to acknowledge Dale Nielsen and Ally Zimmerman for their efforts on the budget as well. So the order of the presentation tonight will be to briefly review the revenues and expenditures of the major categories, and this includes Proposition L, to review programs that the General Fund subsidizes, to review the structural deficit from the General Fund, discuss some of the many accomplishments, just a few of them, from last year, and finally review the city council's top priorities that were established in March of 2012, and find out if there's any new direction from the city council. So before we get started, is there any questions?
I see no questions before we get started.
All right. So we've all experienced over the past year the nation's economic problems, and we've experienced this for about five years, but things have somewhat stabilized. And the only few problems that we have in Vista right now are redevelopment, and we're still continuing to sort through that issue. We have the stabilization of property taxes, but we also have additional uncertainties, federal issues in particular with sequestration and the effects that that may have, as well as fiscal cliff issues. But year by year, we scrutinize the budget. It's become a challenge lately to find additional areas to reduce without wholesale elimination of programs. But as we do every year, the departments review each budget unit on a line item basis, and we meet frequently on the budget. In looking at our local economy, taking away the federal issues, there are some slight improvements. So housing is an area that the house prices have gone up 24% year over year. They're still not where they need to be from the 2007 mark, but they have gone up. Unemployment, year over year, has gone down, which is a good thing. As I mentioned, property tax has stabilized in Vista. We've had four to five years of reductions of property tax, and so it's good that finally property tax has stabilized. And we've had some very healthy increases to sales tax, which have been very beneficial. So attached to Exhibit 1 in your packet is the General Fund summary showing historical data and the proposed 2013-14 General Fund budget, and this is as of mid-March. I would like to point out that the information in here will continue to be reviewed and refined and will change over the next two months when we present it to you on May 14. And any changes that you may have tonight will be incorporated into the document. The total General Fund revenues are estimated at $65,450,000. The major revenues come from some of the following sources. So sales tax accounts for $14,790,000 of our revenue, and this does not include Proposition L. Sales tax has definitely rebounded from the recession. This is in part, consumer confidence is up, but Vista's sales tax is growing because we've added car dealerships, we've added furniture stores, and so over the last two years, we've done some things very well in the city, and we've had higher sales tax. So for the fiscal year 13-14 budget, sales tax is estimated at 12.3% higher than it was for fiscal year 12-13. And the city, I should say, the city's been very conservative in our budget estimates. And in this current fiscal year, we were probably way too conservative. You might look at the chart there, and you'll see that in fiscal year 11-12, the sales tax was higher than it was budgeted for in 12-13, and that was because we were a little leery. We continued to see reductions, and we were wondering when that sales tax point would peak and then start to fall. And fortunately, we haven't seen that. But we probably won't be experiencing double-digit sales tax increases in the near future. In fact, our consultant, HDL, who reviews our sales tax and property tax, has estimated that we'd see increases of approximately 2% to 3% going forward at this estimate. Property tax is at $16.8 million, and the property tax revenues, as I mentioned, have flattened out. There's slight movement in the housing prices, which affords us to increase the property taxes. We put a 1.2% increase on property taxes, which equates to $120,000. Franchise fees are at $2.95 million, and this revenue has remained relatively stable. We've increased it this year by approximately 3%. It includes franchise fees from SDG&E, Edco, as well as the cable service providers. Transient occupancy tax is at $970,000. This is the hotel tax. And in 12-13, we had a very sizable increase in the revenue, the revenue estimates based on the Marriott and the Hyatt. But now that both hotels have been opened for at least six months, in the Hyatt's case and the Marriott longer, our projections are more realistic. We're hopeful that this will increase in the future, but at this point in time, it's a pretty realistic revenue estimate. On the slide, you'll see the Proposition L sales tax. And Proposition L revenues typically reflect about 46% of our General Fund sales tax revenues, and that's due to it being a transaction and use tax. And the transaction and use tax is only applied to purchases by consumers or businesses located within the city and not to goods that are delivered outside the city. So basically, it's where you take possession. So this includes deliveries of furnitures and flowers, but primarily auto sales by people who live outside the city limits are not affected by our Proposition L sales tax. So forecasting Prop L revenues through the life of the half-cent sales tax, which is through 2036-37, staff is projecting a conservative annual estimate, you see on the chart, of 2%. And we'll be able to meet the Prop L expenditures for the term of the life of Prop L, which is good news. Additionally, an annual amount is available to fund the $1.2 million set aside for fire services and is included in the projection. And if you're looking at the chart there, you'll see in 2021, that is where, at this point in time, based on our estimates, that's where the General Fund will start to pick up the $1.2 million in fire salaries. But Prop L will be able to maintain that through 2019-20. Keep in mind, if the revenue increase is larger than, or the annual increase is larger than 2%, that may push that line down to 2021 or 2022. Are there any questions about revenues or Proposition L?
I see none.
Okay, all right. Moving on to expenditures. As it concerns expenditures, we've held the line in most all instances, with the exception of law enforcement. The major department expenditure areas for the General Fund include general government at $5.8 million, public safety at $36.6 million, community development at $6 million, economic development just under $800,000, public works at $2.8 million, and community services at $4.8 million. For 13-14, the expenditures of the General Fund are currently at $65 million, and this includes our operational transfers out for subsidies, as well as the Proposition L sales tax. So there are a number of, within the expenditures, there are a number of nondiscretionary items which the city has, I'll say, little or no control over, and these items continually increase, which erodes the reductions and the holding the line that we've done with the budget. The first one I want to mention is contract law enforcement. Before you, in January of this year, you approved the five-year contract with the Sheriff's Department. We're one of nine cities in the county to contract with the Sheriff's Department, and for 2013-14, the contract's projected at $18.7 million. This is a very large cost. In fact, it's our largest cost ahead of fire. But contracting with the Sheriff's Department, I will say, is the most cost-effective way to provide police protection to our residents. And this was mentioned at the meeting in January as well. Another item is redevelopment. So we're still refining the cost due to the loss of redevelopment, still going through our issues with the Department of Finance, but the unanticipated impacts of redevelopment is close to $1 million. And a portion of this continues to affect the city's structural deficit, and some of these items from redevelopment have been absorbed into the General Fund, and others have been eliminated, as you know, from the past two years. The third item is city hall hours and the furlough program. So for two years, non-safety employees have taken a 5% reduction in salary, and they've assisted in balancing the budget and reducing the structural deficit, but in turn, they work 5% less hours, and we were closed every Friday. So for the proposal for 2013-14 draft budget includes reinstating the 5% reduction in salaries effective July 1st, and therefore, city offices would be again open every other Friday. And this would be consistent with all of the other cities that are open every other Friday in North County, so we'd be on the same schedule. The other item is health care. So we continue to monitor health care, but the problem is, health care costs increase each year at a rate of anywhere between 5% and 14%. So for this year, we're budgeting 9% for increase to health care. The problem is, we don't get the amounts until later in the springtime when we receive the premium increases, so it's not yet known. But at this point, we're budgeting 9% for health care. In addition to those items, we have some uncontrollable costs, and so we're looking at revenue opportunities. Those include franchise fees, increases with the trash hauling agreement with Edco. They include development fees and digital message boards. And we're also monitoring the loss of revenue with the abandoned vehicle abatement program through the state, as well as a decrease in investment earnings. And I want to give you an example of what's happened with our investment earnings. So in 2008-9, the investment earnings were as high as $1.3 million for the General Fund. This year, they're at $483,000, excuse me, and next year, they're projected to be $405,000. So when your liquid cash flow money's invested at a rate of 0.28%, it's not very good. So this has been a significant decrease for us. So are there any questions regarding expenditures?
Nope.
Okay. We'll move on to subsidized programs. So last year, you remember that, you may remember that we went through the subsidized programs, and the city council established a maximum limit or subsidy, and so that you'd prefer to stay in. So when I walk through these, I'll mention the subsidy limit for each area. The Senior Nutrition Program has an estimated subsidy of $263,000, and I'll just give you an overview of each program, just so the audience understands what they provide. The Senior Nutrition Program is funded with grant funding, meal service, fees from our four agencies that contract out with us, as well as participant donations who partake in the meals. Each day, the program serves an average of 90 congregant meals at the Senior Center, delivers 57 home meals, and provides 32 one-way trips for lunch participants to and from the Senior Center. And most of the funding for this program is received from a grant, from the meal service payments, from other agencies. Participant donations also account for a portion of this revenue. So last year, the city council determined that $275,000 was the maximum subsidy that you were comfortable with, and the projections are within that threshold currently. Next subsidy item is the Lighting Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, which is an estimated subsidy of $210,000. And so the LMD provides for arterial and residential streetlights, traffic signals, and tree trimming, and funding received from property owner assessment on the property tax bill. And so we try to identify opportunities where we can to reduce the subsidy to the district. And you may remember, a year ago, we installed approximately 700 streetlights with LED lights, and we installed 320 yellow traffic signal lights that were retrofitted with LED lights. And this saved us a significant amount, and this is the only place in the budget where the utilities or the electricity costs have gone down for the city, and it's a result of that program. That was a federal grant that we used to fund those changes. But we're still working on the budget figures, but the final General Fund subsidy will be within the city council guideline, which is $275,000. Next is the Wave Water Park with an estimated subsidy of $402,000. And again, this could fluctuate slightly between now and May 14. But the Wave provides pool, water park slides, surf features during the summer months, and also provides aquatic programs for the youth, for adults with lap swim camps, junior lifeguard and swim programs. And attendance at the Wave is typically over 80,000 persons per year. In addition, the Wave, like the Moonlight, is a tourist attraction. So visitors come to the Wave, they might stop by and eat, they might go to the gas station, they might find other amenities in the city which to partake in. The revenue from the Wave, though, is generated, obviously, from admissions and yearly passes, as well as single-day admissions, facility rentals, special programs, birthday parties, merchandise, and food sales. I should mention that the pool is also used year-round by the Vista Unified School District, the water polo, and swim teams. So we have a reciprocal agreement with the school district wherein they can use the Wave Water Park, and we can use their gyms and fields. So the General Fund subsidy to the Wave is, or I should say, the subsidy threshold that the council set was $450,000. So the projection for next fiscal year is well within the $450,000. You'll notice on the chart there that the Wave in 11-12, because of the good summer that we just had, had $354,000 subsidy, and the budget for 12-13 is at $446,000. And we're estimating that when the actual number comes in, it'll be lower based on how they do in the May-June timeframe of this year. So the last subsidized program to discuss is the Cultural Arts Program with an estimated subsidy of $145,000. And cultural arts, as you know, includes the Moonlight and the ABO programs. And similar to the Wave Water Park, people that come to the Moonlight not only just go to the Moonlight, but they visit, you know, restaurants, again, gas, and come back to the city and spend their money. One of the things I want to point out is that the city is extremely fortunate to have the Moonlight Cultural Foundation as a partner in this for financial support. For 13-14 fiscal year, once again, the Moonlight Cultural Foundation has pledged $340,000 to the Moonlight to offset the subsidy, and they also spent an additional $100,000 on marketing. And as you might recall, a few years ago, the foundation was also responsible for purchasing the state-of-the-art lighting system for the stagehouse. So the city owes the Moonlight Cultural Foundation a great deal of gratitude for the support that they provide to us. This year, the budget subsidy is projected, as I said, at $145,000 for next year, and this is the lowest subsidy budget projection that we've ever had for this program, and it's due in large part by the foundation's financial support, as well as staff trying to make the Moonlight more efficient. So the council set the maximum subsidy at $200,000 with a goal of getting it to $100,000 at some point, and the proposed budget is consistent with that goal. Are there any questions on the subsidized... Are there any questions on the subsidized programs? Yes?
Councilmember Aguilera.
Yeah, I have a, it's not necessarily, well, I guess it is a question. My concern is with the Wave. We have a joint-use agreement with the Vista Unified School District, and my concern, I guess, is that we have somewhat of an imbalance as far as our costs in supporting the Wave, and they get the benefit from that. I mean, they're not benefiting 100%, so I understand that. But recently, I've heard from various youth organizations, baseball, soccer, that the schools are not reciprocating as per the agreement. They've had some issues. In other words, they've been locked out, and, you know, we need to get, I know you guys have meetings on a quarterly basis, the principals seem to have a lot of control over their fields, and because the district, I guess, is allocating that power to those principals, it's kind of going on a case-by-case basis. And so I think it needs to be communicated to the superintendent and the school district that we do have this joint-use agreement, and we do spend a lot of money as a city to help Vista Unified School District in many ways, not just through the Wave, and we need to get a lot more cooperation from them.
Councilmember Coles has a comment.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that comment. And we do have those quarterly meetings, and I've recently become the representative, one of the representatives along with the mayor. And the new superintendent has been very open to listening to this issue. We brought it up at the last meeting, and he indicated that he would be having some discussions with staff to make sure that we're not indeed locked out or we're not preempted unnecessarily. I mean, the agreements are, have to do with prioritization of local school needs, but sometimes we've gotten feedback that that's been overutilized or unnecessarily implemented. So at this point, and I will be on board with you to see to it that the reciprocal agreement is fairly balanced. And I know that the Wave, for a long time, has been the subject of concern about subsidy, but it is, it's down from what it's been. We pray for another hot summer, and it'll go down further. But the comment that City Manager Patrick Johnson made about the attraction it brings to our retail and to other amenities in our city, I don't know if there's any way to quantify that, or if there's ever been an effort to do so. I know that some places, when you go shopping, somebody asks you questions about why are you here, what did you, where'd you come from? And I don't know if we have a way to assess or to, I wouldn't want to spend a lot of money doing it, but I know we all assume that, and I think it's, in fact, the case because I've seen it happen. But I don't know if there's any way to quantify the amount of residual financial impact we bring into our city because of the Moonlight and the Wave.
We have not done any specific studies to that, but we do know of other venues that are similar to the Wave, excuse me, similar to the Moonlight that have done studies that have shown the benefit of the people coming into Vista that aren't Vista residents. In addition to that, I should have pointed out that the Moonlight has a large audience outside of Vista, from Oceanside, from Carlsbad, all the way to Orange County into San Diego. So there are a lot of benefits in terms of it being a tourist attraction. One of the comments, too, on the Wave Water Park is that because the schools use it in the wintertime, that's what costs the city a lot of money in terms of keeping the pool heated because it's a requirement. And we are working with the school district in looking at making sure that it is somewhat of an equitable reciprocal agreement. In the past, it seemed to favor probably the city before the Wave Water Park became in the mid-'90s, and now that the Wave's there, in terms of spending money, the city's probably spending a little more money than the school district, but we are working with the school district.
Thank you for doing that, and I appreciate what Deputy Mayor's had to say and the mayor for what you guys do.
We're also talking about the sports park, and I'm used on that, too.
Okay. So now, will, any other questions?
Oh, Councilmember Rigby, sorry, I didn't see it there.
That's okay, thank you. The same thing I had wanted to discuss. I know that back in probably September or October for the Parks and Recreation Department, the same issue came up regarding the reciprocal use agreements with the school, and the school representative to the commission was going to do an equity study basically with city staff to find out, just because people say things to us, but I'm really not sure the validity of that, and the commission had asked for it to actually be looked into. So do we, do we have the facts on what the equity is in the agreement?
I'd ask Bill Fortmiller to come on up to the podium and discuss that. I'm not sure what the commission's stance on that is.
I just never heard anything after that request.
The school district representative has changed since then, or actually, September, the representative hasn't been at our meetings for a variety of personal reasons, so we haven't got anything back. I know we've been discussing it with the district. Again, our primary usage for the school district, we use the gyms for our basketball program, and the Wave is used for the aquatics program. We are trying to get some numbers for them, looking at the whole agreement. There's some questions on which schools are on the agreement, some charter schools are on there, they're looking at a variety of different issues, but we don't have any definite numbers back as yet.
Okay.
And I know the school district is looking at the reciprocal agreement as well, in terms of what schools should be allocated field assignments.
Will there be an opportunity to get some hard numbers, hard facts about what the reciprocal use actually is at some point?
In terms of, you know, from a financial standpoint?
And usage standpoint.
Absolutely. We've done studies in the past, I just don't think we've...
Right. For years, we kept, you know, what it would cost if we were using the, like Mr. Johnson said, I think at one point, we owed the school district maybe $400,000 in use fees, and then after so many years with the Wave, they owed us 200,000, and it kept growing. But we always just had these lists and nothing was ever done with it, and then they started looking at the time it was taken to calculate all this. And so the last agreement, they pretty much said, we're just going to, just going to have reciprocal billing, we're not reciprocal billing, just reciprocal use, and not really worry about who's, you know, who's spending what. It's a benefit to the community, they were, both entities are benefiting from the joint usage. And that was kind of the direction we had at the time, and I know it's somewhat changing now, and take a different look at it.
I was only asking because I know a couple of people have commented over the past few years about, and we discussed this at a commission meeting, about a field or something was supposed to be available, but it wasn't, and then checking with the school it really was. So I was just, I don't want there to be a perception that there is this horrible inequity if there really isn't. That's my only reason for asking.
Yeah, I think as Councilmember Coles stated, we're working with the district. I think we can rectify that issue. I don't think the field allocation issue, I think we can work through that. And I echo what Mr. Fortmiller said, that while the city maybe contributed more financially with the reciprocal agreement, there is a definite benefit to the youth and to the residents of Vista to participate in that agreement at this time.
Councilmember Aguilera followed by Councilmember Coles.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I guess, finalize a point, and I just, I think it's important that we understand that there is a huge benefit to all of the community, and I'm not really, I'd be hesitant to get out there and say, hey, you owe us this, or, you know, that's not what I'm looking for. Really just looking for better cooperation so that the entire community would benefit. I think it's great what we provide to the Vista Unified and the water polo teams and that in the winter. I just want to make sure that we're getting the most we can from both agencies.
Yeah, we've definitely noticed a change this, in this last year over Rob Anderson, who does a lot of the allocations. Usually had, we'd get great, you know, results from the school district, but more and more, he's getting denials, and it's becoming...
No, I understand, you're kind of, you and Rob particularly are at the, getting the brunt of it, so...
So, yeah, we're working on it, but it's just been a recent change. It's been very cooperative in the past.
Well, I'm confident that'll be resolved. Thank you.
Work itself out. Councilmember Coles?
Yeah, just a final comment on that. The cost analysis sometimes can be a little bit of an elastic measurement because we change our rates, they change their rates, and if we use that as a billing yardstick, sometimes that's inaccurate. There are actual costs that can be measured, like the cost of heating the pool and the utilities and that sort of thing, the cost of running the gyms and taking care of the fields. So the cost analysis, I think somebody mentioned, it's a usage issue more that we want equity in. And I continue to emphasize the issue that the site leaderships need, needs to understand their role in working with the city and the city programs, and with our help, I think we can see that that happens. And again, as you mentioned, Councilmember Aguilera, these are all our kids. They're, most, some Oceanside kids come in, but for the most part, these are our kids, and we like to see them served well. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Now we're on to the general fund's structural deficit, and so, as all of you know, the city's dealt with the structural deficit within the general fund since the onset of the recession, and the reductions to date have been pretty significant. However, for the past recession, we haven't been able to do enough to close the gap at this time between revenues and expenditures. I want to point out that a structural deficit is where your ongoing operating revenues do not meet your expenditures. And so I want to point out that the city's been able to meet our deficit using existing city money, what we consider to be one-time money. We're not going out and we're not borrowing money to balance our budget, we have money internally, but we do still have, with ongoing funding, we do still have a deficit between the expenditures and revenues. There's been some people that have stated out in the community that we've had to borrow money to balance our budget, and that's simply not true. But to give you an example of what the deficit was five years ago, it was 12.3 million, and you can see on your chart here, four years ago, it was 10 million, three years ago, it went down to nine, and then two years ago, it was four. This year, it's at 2 million. And so based on the early budget numbers, it appears that the maximum subsidy for the 1314 year will be 1.5 million, as indicated on the chart. I will say, the number will likely be reduced as the final budget numbers are prepared for the City Council for May 14th. And so our goal is to get it closer to a million dollars, and that is your goal as well. So we're doing everything we can to do that. I want to point out that the City Council set aside a structural deficit reserve two years ago, and you contributed to it last fiscal year with the year-end fund balance, and there's currently 3.2 million in that fund. And so it's adequate to take care of the million or so structural deficit that we'll have for 1314. Are there any questions on the structural deficit?
It's not the reserves. When you say a structural deficit fund, that's not the same as our reserve fund.
No. So when we talk about our reserve, we're talking about our, what we, you know, used to call our 10% reserve, now we call our 12% reserve. That's more for catastrophic events, things that are major in nature. When I say the structural deficit reserve, it's just a pot of money that you set aside for a specific purpose.
Any questions down there on that? Nope.
Okay, we're getting there. So next to the last item is accomplishments, and while we certainly have challenges throughout the year, staff works hard to provide good service to the community, and so I just wanted to go over a few of the accomplishments that we've had this past year. You have an exhibit within your agenda report that's got all of them. So the first one is the Fire Department. Fire Department responded to 11,359 calls for service in 2012, and they're a very, very busy department, as we all know. The Sheriff's Department responded to more than 60,000 calls in 2012, and part of that is calls for service from the public and deputy-initiated calls, and it's about a 60-40 split there. The FBI crime index counts and the crime rate is down from 2011 again, so that was a good news. Public Works has been pretty busy on the graffiti removal side, and they've done a really good job at it, and we encourage the public to continue to notify us when there's graffiti. I've mentioned this to all of you before, that it's surprising to find out that, let's just say we have 100 cases of graffiti, we might only get five or six calls on graffiti within the city for those 100 cases. And so it's about Public Works being the eyes and ears in the field, but we'd appreciate if people would call and report that. But graffiti removal, as you see there, we removed 121,000 square feet. Asphalt repairs, we've done 77,000 square feet, pothole repairs, 6,500 square feet. We completed the Paseo Santa Fe Detention Basin, which was one of your goals. We constructed over 7 million in CIP projects. The Fifth Kites Over Vista exhibit was installed. We prevailed in the Charter City lawsuit, which we owe a lot of thanks to Daryl Piper, and so do all the other city, Charter cities in the state. We received a $1 million grant for the Buena Creek Trail extension. We delivered 13,200 meals to homebound seniors. Code enforcement officers responded to 1,300 calls for service, and we graduated the eighth Vista Leadership Academy, and we'd love to start the ninth in the fall. We removed 117 abandoned vehicles from city streets and properties, so those abandoned vehicles that are in the right of way or on properties where the property owners asked us to remove them, we still have funding to remove abandoned vehicles at this time. The Hyatt Hotel opened, which was quite an accomplishment for the city, and we completed 4.8 million in sewer rehab projects. Any questions on the accomplishments? All right, we're in the final stretch. So the final topic is the City Council's top priorities, and I stated earlier, in March 2012, the City Council set these top priorities, and so I thought I'd review them, give you an update of where we're at with some of the priorities, and then find out from you if you're fine with the current priorities and want to wait until March 2014 to make any changes. So the first one you see is Paseo Santa Fe, and so the council's direction was to continue to move forward with the Detention Basin project. If possible, continue with the Streetscape design and infrastructure project so long as the state allows the successor agency to utilize the existing bond funds. In addition, staff will focus on recruiting developers to invest in the project. So that's the write-up on Paseo Santa Fe. So as I stated earlier, we completed the Detention Basin project. We're moving forward with the Streetscape design that came before you last month. The council approved the DDA with affirmed housing, so Paseo Santa Fe is moving forward. Unfortunately, one of the items there was to be able to use our 2011 bond funds, and we, meaning Vista, along with 50 other agencies in the state, are not able to use their bond funds that they bonded for in 2011. We're continuing to try to get that changed to the state, but it's a tough road. We've notified our state representatives, but nothing's happened at this point. On public safety, the direction was to maintain the current levels of fire and law enforcement services and direct staff to identify and apply for grants. So we have not had any reductions in public safety, none are proposed for the next fiscal year, and we are actively applying for grants and receiving grants in terms of public safety, one of which came before you tonight. The next item is the business retention and recruitment and expansion, and so you directed us to continue recruiting new businesses into the business park in downtown, continue the city's retention program, keeping businesses from moving out of Vista, and review business incentive options in an effort to recruit and retain new businesses. So we continue to perform these functions, as you all know, and in October, you received the Economic Development Strategic Plan that was presented, and a lot of those issues are within that, including the incentive options. Third, or fourth there is structural deficit, and we talked about that. We're getting closer to the 1 million mark, and I'm confident that it'll be, it'll be less than the 1.5 that's stated in the report. And the last top council priority was the improvement of roadways, and so your direction was to prioritize road improvement projects based on entryways into the city and make it a priority to maintain existing street infrastructure. So I think we can all agree that we've made great strides over the last three years in particular, improving our roadways, and we'll continue to emphasize the roadways that are most frequently traveled, and we've also completed the installation of four new entry signs into the city. So we'll continue to address these priorities in the upcoming budget, and just want to find out if there's any questions from you or change in the priorities, or are you okay with waiting until March 2014?
Anybody? Looks like, looks like we're okay. Okay with it?
So that concludes my presentation, and I know there's some speakers.
I have two speakers. You want to hear the speakers?
Sure.
Okay, first is Chuck. Chuck must, you must know, you're standing up ready to go. Chuck must, you must know, you're standing up ready to go. Chuck Rabel.
Unfortunately, when you get old and you're disabled, you can't sit too long or stand too long. Property tax, I think it's going to grow. Anecdotal note, my good friend of mine and her husband sold their property just off at Thibodeau. They got $40,000 more than they asked for it, all cash, and they've got rent-free for two months. I think that's what's happening, and I think I'm going to join her and probably peddle my joint.
I know a good realtor.
And if I do, and if I do leave Vista, you'll all be the better for it. When you talk about heads on page two, let's keep in mind, government should be fixed cost, not variable cost. And if we got along without that, this 110 heads for as long as we have, maybe, just maybe, we can continue to do that. The population hasn't grown that much, and just a thought, I noticed the BMW dealership is now using the parking lot up near Lowe's. I trust that we're making some money on that transaction. They're not going to default like the Ford did. Moving right along, if we subsidize something, we should be able to use enterprise accounting like we do with the WAVE, to have a better look at what the cost and the revenue really is. And I would suggest that you ask the staff for operating statements from all of those, those four or five things that we talked about subsidizing. My time is up? No, I'm doing good. When you look at expenditures, get inside of them and look at the overtime for the firefighters. It would amaze you how much it is. Million and a half, $2 million last year. So, what we need to do is get inside the working agreement with the union to see to it that we're not spending more than we need to. With that, I've got another meeting to go to. I will mention that it appears that there's not going to be any, well, the CIP will come back in a month or two, right? And that's, that'll be time for another argument. I do appreciate your time. I'm off to Oceanside. Thanks for your service.
Looking for a house over there? Yeah, you looking for a house over there, Chuck?
No, it's a meeting.
We're just teasing you. Okay, Cliff Kaiser.
Evening again, Mayor and Council. First off, I certainly applaud you in this effort. Budgets are never an easy task to deal with, and this first pass will be fraught with more challenges a second time around, when you have to really get down to the approval process. A couple of comments for you. The four-day work week, the furlough program, is not really a salary cut, in my mind. That's really a unpaid time off. And so, as we look to still balance the budget or control costs, maybe we ought to look at cutting those salaries. Now, I understand employees work hard, and we can't perhaps suggest everybody take a salary cut, but I would certainly encourage you to look at your salaries and continue that 5% or maybe increase it to 10% to help balance this budget. The other thing is the healthcare costs that you project to increase again, and, you know, all of the business community and, you know, every person is faced with that challenge, and that becomes a balance of what kind of health coverage perhaps that I want versus what my employer is paying for. And that's the same challenge that you face as a city, and I'm not sure that the city does, or if they should pay for 100% or 80%, and that should be a part of the discussion that you have with any kind of compensation package. If the healthcare goes up and salary goes up and all the other compensation benefits go up, maybe we ought to look at what's the right balance there. With regard to WAVE, Water Park, and more particularly, the Vista Unified School District stuff, I remain concerned about that, and I mentioned at the revenue discussion meeting, I think, a couple of meetings ago, that it's not clear to me that we really track how much cost we expend for the service of Vista Unified School District versus how much cost they expend in return for that. I know it's, we certainly want to maintain a strong and amiable relationship with the school district, but if, in where I'm involved in on a personal level at the city parks and ballfields and stuff like that, the city's parks are 100% better than the school parks or the school ballfields, and that just doesn't seem right, okay? If we, in the case of the Vista Girls softball, for example, we play at Buena Vista Ballfields, which is adjacent to Rancho Buena Vista High School. They have a ballfield on their property, which is overgrown with grass. They don't even use it. They use the city's school, or the city ballfields because their field is not playable. So, it does need to be reviewed, and I think the costs need to be balanced. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate the struggles that you face here and the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Okay, with that, any other questions from the council? Do we, we don't need a motion on this, do we? Information?
No, no motion. I think if, there's no other questions.
I just wanted to make a comment about the Fridays, and I'm just glad that we are opening up on Fridays. I would prefer every Friday, but I've talked to the city manager about that, and if we can find a way to maybe reduce the number of people that are here on Friday, but make Fridays available, I would like to see the staff look into that, if that's a possibility. But certainly, some Fridays are better than none. I think the city deserves, the city to be open on Fridays.
Got it. Anybody else? Any other comments? No, no, no? Okay. With that, then...
Thank you very much.
With that, we are moving on to, what is next? I lost the last page here. Hold on. We're moving on, I think, to Oral Communications. Is that where we are?
Yes.
Yes, Oral Communications. Okay, so I have, okay, so I have, the first one is J.C. Nguyen.
...to an empty house. Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm J.C. Nguyen, wearing my Santa hat tonight at the council meeting to let everyone know that the annual Easter egg hunt in the city of Vista is going to go on this Saturday at Bringle Terrace Park. We have lots of eggs, candy, and volunteers showing up about 9:00 to throw another fine party for the kids of our community, and I look forward to seeing some of you there, maybe come out and hunt some eggs. We can get some special eggs for you or something. But, once again, thanks for all the help from Bill Fort Mueller from the Parks and Rec, getting it all, helping us get all set up, and all the people that are coming out and stepping up to, once again, throw a first-class Easter egg hunt for the kids of our community. And I'm just here to invite everybody out there in TV land that might see this before Saturday to come on out and have a good time, so. And thanks for all your guys' hard work, and a little suggestion on the Friday thing, maybe the first and the third Friday this half can come, and the second and the fourth Friday that half can come.
See, John, see what you got us into.
So on and so on, we'll be open all Fridays.
J.C., how does that work, the Easter egg hunt? I mean, it's a span of hours, several hours?
Yeah.
I mean, do you re-hide eggs, or do you have a...
No, we have a, we have a program. We have set up a big stage, and we have the jazzersizers come out to get the kids moving. We have the princesses from the Vista Pride princesses face painting. We've got the skateboarders in one corner going to do skateboard demonstrations, and the karate kids in that corner doing karate demonstrations, and we have raffles are going to go on all day long to help fund the event. And by the time they're all done doing all that, the other volunteers from the youth groups and the churches and everything will be staking off the ballfields and putting out the eggs, and then we send them off, and as the mayor would remember from the past, where they walk them down with their sticks, and by 11:15 or 11:30, we honk the horn, they grab the eggs, and 10 minutes later, we're all cleaning up and go home. But it's, you know, it's a process, but it's a fun process. And like I said before, I sat here and listened to all the great organizations that help seniors and help kids and help everything, and my comment to you in the past is our community is only as great as it is that we take care of our elderly and our kids, and everybody in the middle just steps up and does whatever's needed, and therefore, our seniors and our kids are taken care of, and our community is a greater place, so that's what I'm about.
May I ask a question? Yeah. Are you still doing the Easter bonnet contest this year?
Easter bonnet contest also.
I know I helped with that in years past, and it was always adorable.
Yes, we definitely got...
We're going to have that again.
Easter bonnet contest, prizes for the winners, golden eggs in each field for the prize, to find a golden egg, bring it down, so we've got the whole, whole package.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you for organizing all that, J.C. Okay, I have, I have three speakers here for the Relay for Life. So, the first speaker is Kathy Johnson.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life of Vista, which will take place July 13th and 14th at Rancho Minerva Middle School. My name is Kathy Johnston, and I'm the event chair for Vista's Relay for Life. Relay for Life is a 24-hour event to celebrate Vista's cancer survivors and to remember those who have lost their battle. It's a family event where we can camp out, take turns walking the track throughout the 24 hours, because cancer never sleeps. Relay for Life is truly a life-changing event. We begin by inviting cancer survivors to walk the first lap. Halfway around the track, their caregivers join them. Another highlight of Relay for Life is the luminaria ceremony. We honor, sorry, once the sun goes down, we light luminaria bags, and we either have them in honor of a cancer survivor or in memory of someone who has lost their battle. This is our seventh year in Vista, and last year, we had a record 344 participants at our Relay for Life. This year's goal is to involve even more of the Vista community and to educate them about how they can benefit from the programs and services offered by the American Cancer Society. Last year, we honored 64 cancer survivors, and we raised over $57,000 for the American Cancer Society. Did you know that 94 cents of every dollar we raise goes back for research funding? It goes to cancer prevention, early detection, free services for cancer patients, and community events. Only 6 cents from every dollar goes to general costs and overhead. We hold our expenses in check so we can put maximum focus on our life-saving mission. And we really look at Relay for Life as a gift to the community of Vista, and every single one of us knows someone who's been touched by cancer, and so, we're inviting you to participate in our event, and either come out and join us, or Judy's going to talk to you about forming a team, and just kind of, we want the city behind us and the city to know that we're really doing a service to the city of Vista. So, thank you.
Thank you. And next is Judy, Judy Wallace.
Hi, thank you for inviting us tonight. I'm Judy Wallace, and I'm the team development for Relay for Life for Vista, and last year, we had 29 teams that participated, and we all know that there's more people in Vista than 29 teams. It takes anywhere from eight to 12 people on a team, and you want that many because one person from your team at all times is on the track during the 24 hours. It's not something that you have to pull the whole 24 hours, but we have had people that have walked the entire time. We're asking if the city council would get involved and possibly form a team, or there's a mayor competition within the other cities around San Diego County, that there's a friendly competition between the mayors that get involved, and we ask that each team member raise $100. We have a $100 philosophy. It's pretty easy to get out there and raise $100 when you know what it's going for. I take it very personally. I'm a breast cancer survivor, and Relay for Life, what it did for me when I first went out to relay and saw my name as in honor of and set of and in memory of, my journey started to heal. I realized that I did have an option, and I could have not been here. So, I encourage you guys to get involved, support us in any way you can. We have a Paint the Town Purple that a lot of communities have, and it's where the city actually puts out purple ribbons on lamp posts. We hang banners. We can do anything, and Relay for Life has never asked the city to do that before, or it's never been accomplished before, and we would love to have that opportunity in either May or June this year. So, that's what we're asking for. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Stacy Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us. I'm Stacy, and I actually work for the American Cancer Society, and I get to partner with Kathy and Judy, who are just two of our wonderful volunteers that work with us to plan the Relay for Life of Vista. As a nonprofit, we are a complete volunteer organization, grassroots effort, so I just wanted to come here and just ask for a few ways that you guys might be able to be involved this year. Like Judy said, we're looking for more teams, so we definitely ask if the city council would like to form a team. We also look for event sponsors, starting at a $500 to $10,000 level, in terms of a monetary contribution. Since we are grassroots, we need a lot of help with publicity, because we have a $0 budget for that, which takes a lot of manpower to make happen, so if there's any way that we can utilize the city for advertising in terms of putting up posters, flyers, brochures, being included in newsletters, emails, and then also, we would love to put a banner above Vista Village Drive advertising our event, if that's something that we're able to get done before July 13th. We have our opening ceremony at 9:00 a.m., which honors all of the Vista cancer survivors, and if anyone would like to come and speak at our opening ceremony, we would love to have someone from the city speak. And then, lastly, we have a Mayor's Against Cancer Campaign, which if, throughout different cities, mayors can get involved with Relay for Life and kind of do that avenue as well. So, I just kind of wanted to let you know of the broad spectrum of opportunities that we have to get involved. We would love to have your support in any way that's possible, and we're just trying to get the word out about our event, so I just want to thank you again for having us, and thank you for all of your support to the American Cancer Society. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rigby.
I just, pardon me, I just want to say thank you to the ladies for coming, Stacy and Judy and Kathy. I've been involved with the Relay for Life here in Vista on different levels for the past few years, and since Kathy has taken over as chairman, it has grown exponentially, and it has raised more money than it had ever raised before, so they've done a really great job. And I support forming a city team, and I'm looking out there, too. So, don't think this is the last you've heard of it. I'm going to be trying to solicit everybody to get out there and walk, take at least an hour for that 24-hour period, because it's a great cause. It's a really great cause, so thank you for coming out here tonight, and thank you for doing this again this year.
Thank you. Any other comments here? Okay, so then, let's see, I think we're going to, reports and comments from our city officials, so I'll start with Amanda. Oh, Councilmember Rigby. Councilmember Coles, Deputy Mayor Coles.
Yeah, thank you. Two quick things.
It's getting late.
Events that I've been able to participate in the last, since the last meeting, we had the North Coastal Prevention Coalition Breakfast last week, which was, I think, many of us were able to go to that, and it's wonderful to see the support and the progress that that group has brought into our communities here in the North County to help young people avoid the dangers of substance abuse, and we need to do a lot more, but this group is really on track to help us. And then, of course, I get to mention at first, it was a great luncheon today at the Boys and Girls Club, the 50th birthday. I was happy to... I was happy to have been on that board when I first came here years ago and saw the wonderful things that they were doing then, and it's even gotten better. So we owe a lot of support to the Boys and Girls Club.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yeah.
Are you on?
There you go. Thank you, Mayor. I do have something I'd like to bring up tonight. As you may be aware, I'm proposing that the city join a growing list of cities in North County adopting a outdoor smoking ban, and I'm going to be presenting a packet of information to you tonight and one for the city clerk to maintain on file as well. So I just ask that you review this, and hopefully, we can consider bringing this forward to the council next month on the twenty-third for a review. So, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I definitely enjoyed the lunch today. I thought the kids did a great job, and the gal that sang was really good.
Yeah, she was very good.
And so was Dick Denzil. He did a great job with that song as well. So that was quite enjoyable, and I just enjoyed meeting the leaders last Friday. You were one of those leaders. But it was nice to have the congressman there and our state representatives there as well, Mark Gualan and Rocky Chavez. They were all very accessible and good to speak to.
I agree. So, and actually, I was, I wrote down, like Dave, I was thinking, well, let me write down what we've done for the last week and a half, because sometimes people wonder what we do besides, you know, our sanddag and our North County Transit District and our meetings that we do, transportation and safety. So I wrote down some things that we did besides the North County Coastal Prevention Coalition. I went to a day, I did the installation of the officers for the Vista Emblem Club at the Elks, which was kind of interesting. That was fun. We all did the Patrick's Day Parade, rode on the fire truck. We had, Cody and I did Judge the Optimus Oratorical Contest, and that was kind of interesting. All the kids, was it, how I can use my voice? Was that the subject? How they all talked on how they could use their voice. And so different, and they had a speech that was, I can't remember how many minutes, three minutes or five minutes long, and so that was kind of interesting to judge that. We did the State of the Community at the Boys and Girls Club with the Association of Latino Merchants and their families. And I also did a State of the Community for the Noon Kuanas. I did the Meals on Wheels for the seniors. We did Meet the Leaders on Friday, which was fun. And then the Boys and Girls Club today, the fiftieth anniversary, and they're doing a skate clinic on Friday, Friday, Saturday, Friday afternoon, yeah, from three to five, yeah. They're going to teach kids how to build skateboards there. So I thought that was kind of interesting. And then on the Boys and Girls Club, it just said, since nineteen sixty-three, they've served over forty-two thousand five hundred children without turning a child away during, due to an inability to pay. So I thought that was important. This is their golden anniversary, and they provide services for the youth ages six to eighteen. And then my little announcements here, I have Born Yesterday is playing at the ABU, runs through April seventh, so that's all, those shows are always really good there. I'm excited to announce the Moonlight Summer Season of Musicals, and the opening show is going to be South Pacific, starting June twenty-sixth, followed by The Wizard of Oz. And with The Wizard of Oz, I understand they're going to have the flying, so that ought to be interesting to see that. The third show is Young Frankenstein, starting on August twenty-first, and the season will close with The Who's Tommy, starting on September eighteenth. So they're all, it should be a great season this summer. Household Hazardous Waste Facility is closed this Saturday because of the Easter holiday, and so I'd like to, you know, have everybody celebrate the Easter if they do, and have a nice family day and a Happy Easter. And then one other thing, ARP is providing free income tax preparation. Ooh, that's coming, you know, April fifteenth, you guys. Free income tax preparation services for seniors at the McClellan Senior Center on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays through April fifteenth. So you can make an appointment by calling seven six zero seven two six thirteen forty, seven six zero seven two six thirteen forty, extension fifteen forty. And then I wanted to know, do you know the extension for the graffiti removal of your head?
Yeah, it's a extension one six oh six, sixteen oh six, so...
Sixteen oh six, but for that, if you have a graffiti to report. So that's the same number, the seven two six thirteen forty, and then sixteen oh six.
And sixteen oh six works for pretty much reporting anything in the city in terms of potholes, streetlights, graffiti removal, those type of things.
Okay, and that is pretty much all, except I would just ask you all to shop Vista, get your gas here, and so it helps, helps all of our budget. And with that, I'll pass it on to our city manager.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. The April ninth meeting will likely be canceled, and so our next meeting will be on April twenty-third. And I just want to thank the city council for coming to the employee event on Saturday night. It meant a lot to the employees, and I hope you...
I forgot about that, yeah.
They had a good time, and I hope you did, too. And then out in the lobby, we have the New Dimensions Art Exhibit, and this is the last week that it'll be running and up, and so the Public Arts Commission has done a good job, and so that'll come down on March thirtieth. Thank you.
City Attorney, you have...
I have nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Big announcements for us or anything? City Clerk, Marcy, anything?
Happy Easter.
Happy Easter. Kathy Faldes, anything down there? Assistant City Clerk? Okay, with that, it is seven twenty-nine, and we are adjourned. Yay.
Cody, I'll be supporting you on this.